Well, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the order. The April 30th Pickle City School Board of Education meeting. Mr. Hiddle, could you please do a roll call?
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Okay, next we have Mr. Height will lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance. So, Mr. Height, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first order of business is we need to have motions to approve the minutes from the last, from the March 26th regular meeting. So if we have a motion, please.
So moved.
Okay. And Mr. Height, would you like to, or Jeremy, would you like to do a call on this so we know everybody's?
Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Height. Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. The next motion we need is to approve tonight's agenda. So if we may have a motion, please.
So moved.
Okay. May we have a second? Okay. All right, Mr. Hiddle.
Mr. Ford.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Okay. Well, another order of business now tonight, we're, we're doing this for the first time. So everybody be patient. It's our initial, you know, meeting doing this. Hopefully we can get back to meeting as a group, but for now we, we have to do this. In order to do this, we must pass the special resolution. And this is our first action tonight, a resolution that allows us to have our meeting this way on Zoom. So if we could have a motion by someone.
So moved.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so we have a, have a second. So Mr. Hiddle, if you would please.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we have the board report from Upper Valley Career Center. Mr. Height, do you have anything for tonight?
Pretty short. We met Monday. We've, we met about the same manner as what we're meeting tonight. Biggest order of business was revise schedule of events for the spring. Obviously a lot of cancellations and readjustments of things because of the situation we're in now. And just like we're doing tonight, we did a lot of policy updates as well. So other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Height. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is I have nothing from a hearing from the public. And so I guess, Mr. Toon, if we don't, don't have anything, please let me know if we're clear to go. But I have nothing so far, so we'll move along. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Mr. Hiddle.
Okay, well, so just a brief update as far as what we're hearing on the financial end of things. We're looking at, again, anywhere from a 20% decrease to a 29% decrease in our state foundation formula funding. And that's going to happen sooner rather than later. They have to somehow figure out how to balance the fiscal year 2020 because we have a balanced budget amendment that requires them to do so. So they're telling us to prepare for at least 20%. They're also talking now about taking a loan out from the federal government, basically to make sure that we have a balanced budget. So those are the two things that they have cooking right now. And then basically for FY '21, they're revamping the entire budget and trying to rebring that back out as a balanced budget. But they're trying to figure out what does this look like? As we get into the second quarter of the year, what do the numbers look like? Because the first quarter was almost done when they shut down the, the state. So everything looks pretty good for the first quarter, but the, the second quarter isn't going to be that way. So they're trying to do some estimating and get that worked out. So that's what we, that's what we know so far. Again, I go back to, that's why we prepare for rainy days. And that's why, that's why we're in the position we're in. We don't have to take drastic measures today. We just need to take sound measures today to prep us for the next year. And then we can gauge what happens instead of having a knee jerk reaction where we pull the rug out from everything. So we're in a good, we're in good shape at this point. And we'll continue to monitor what happens with that. Are there any questions?
No, I just, you know, Jeremy, I just think everybody has to realize that everybody is in this boat. All districts are throughout the state. And we're just going to have to sit and watch and try to stay very fiscally sound through this.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at our numbers, again, we're 20% of our foundation, we're talking about $3.75 million. And then you start adding on the income tax potential hits that will be taken on that. We're going to be closer to $4 million in revenue that we're, that we're talking about. So again, good news is, is that we're in a position where we can handle the blip. And hopefully it's just a blip and they can get everybody back to work and the economy back, back going. And, and this is just a, a short time period of an issue. I guess one other note on that, we are going to get a, we are going to see about $700,000 coming in from the federal government as part of the stimulus funds for K-12 education. So I should say that that is on there. Good news with that is that's going to help us continue to provide online education and things like that, that we know the technology, we need to be able to do that. It's a, we were lucky that we had the devices that we had, but they were aging out. So this, this could potentially give us an opportunity to, to fix some of those technology issues that we have coming, as well as a whole host of other things that, that that money can be used for.
Okay.
Any questions on the financial reports for March? Everything looks like normal and can hardly tell anything happened at this point. All right, any questions? Otherwise that's all I have.
Okay. Well, no questions, so we need a motion for the treasurer's agenda vote.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hiddle.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Good evening, everybody. I'll give some updates in terms of some of the things that are happening around the school district. And then we'll move on to my agenda. Graduation plan is in place. There's been a lot of talk out there about graduation plans over the last week. Some, some changes in terms of what was communicated from everywhere, from the governor's office and the Department of Education and so on. And I think we've kind of caught up now. The basic premise was currently in the month of May, when graduations would happen, there is going to be no in-person graduations. We met with the student class officers of 2020. And I'm really glad we did that because we got a lot of really good feedback. And they really are going to be stepping out into this. And, and we need to really help guide them into some of these leadership roles and hear their voices. And that was important to us to do, and they, they gave us some really good, good ideas. So our plan offers three options. The students are voting on what option best meets their needs. It has received the approval of the health department in all of our phases. And we've tried really hard not to change and keep changing and keep sending new communication because we've always been really intentional with what we communicate. So people can really plan forward because we know a lot of people make plans based on what we're sharing. So I'm just trying to be really consistent as much as possible. And we have some backup plans built in. So option one is they can have the diploma mailed to them if they would like. Option two is they can have a photo opportunity. We're going to have a stage set up and decorated at Wirth Stadium, just as we would for graduation night. They can sign up. We can have the 10 people gather according to the standards right now. And we will announce the student's name, film them walking up on the stage. Their parents will actually get to hand the student their diploma. We'll get some photo opportunities and include that in a video. And they would be done with their choice at that time. Option three would be some kind of a version of an in-person event. The caveat to that, of course, is if on July 3rd, the, the governor allows for that. Currently, all facilities and buildings and everything are closed to students until the 30th of June. We don't know what will happen after that. And, and the class officers kind of wanted to push it back, hoping that we could do something for those that really want that opportunity. So if the governor allows that and if the health department can approve it, we'll do something. It might be a scaled down version, or it might be whoever's left over. We, we have like an 80, 200 seat capacity at the stadium. So we've got plenty of space to do the social distancing. We have purchased face masks for everybody with some Indian logos and things on it. So we have a pretty good clear plan. And our, our health department director, Annie Wilker, has been very supportive, very helpful. She, she really likes what we've got. So Lord willing and the governor willing to let us do it on the 3rd, we will have some sort of a ceremony. If not, then our backup plan to these seniors and all of our communication has been, they'll have to go back to option one or two and pick one of those which are already in compliance at this time with the governor's orders. So voting is going really well. We, we have sent communication via text. We've done phone calls. We've done emails. We, we now have sent letters out. So we're trying to make sure everybody gets that. We'll match that up to the students that are on our list to graduate. And if we haven't heard from anybody in terms of voting, we'll reach out personally with phone calls and try to make sure every single person has told us what they want to do in terms of how they want to receive their diploma. So are there any questions about graduation from anybody?
I have a question.
Yes.
What sort of responses have you received thus far? I know they're not due in until Monday, but.
Yep. So I anticipated that. So we've had 91 votes so far. We've had 60 students want some type of an in-person ceremony. 21 students are asking that they be mailed and 10 are asking for the photo op. And we've had some good questions, you know, some parents have, have called in and, and students have emailed and just they're trying to make a really good decision based on their family. And all really, really good feedback. I've not had one person not like the plan. The questions have been answered very easily. We've been able to accommodate pretty much anybody at this point. So I think we're on a, on a good track.
Okay.
Any other questions about graduation? We'll keep you posted as well as the class of 2020. If we get any further guidance, you know, we're, we're pretty far out still. And it could be a blessing or a curse that we're on July 3rd. Who knows what will happen as the economy opens up? But as things evolve and we get more direction, we'll keep everybody posted. Wanted to update everybody on kindergarten registration. We, we had all those dates set and they were on our calendars. And many people have, have responded well in terms of understanding what those dates were. And they've been asking questions, but how we normally do that registration process just couldn't take place at this time. So we're in the process of setting up a different version. Parents that want to register their, their kindergartners for next year, they can right now go onto our website. And on the top right-hand side, there's a red file folder image. And if they click on that icon, they can start registering their kid and provide us with some information. And what that will do is get, get them on our radar, so to speak, so that as we communicate further information out, we can start connecting with them through phone calls or through emails and the information that they, that they give us. So parents can start that on their own. If they don't have the availability to get online and make that connection, or sometimes it's kind of hard if they only have a phone to click on that and try to fill that out. We are making arrangements that will probably start around May 11th, where they can call in to the board office. They can share the information with somebody here and we'll input that data for them. And then we'll take care of all that at our end. We'll get some information out as soon as we have that all set up. And that will go out on our social media formats. We'll make sure everybody's aware of it in the community. Maybe we'll get something in the newspaper and make sure people know they can start registering kindergartners for next year. Any questions on that? Nope, okay, we are working on a plan as business is open to open up our businesses, our, our buildings rather partially. We're going to start next week with our building administrators who are going to start coming into the buildings. We're going to transition phone calls over to the buildings and start getting mail deliveries and things like that back to the buildings. Our principals are really ready to start kind of leading that charge again and organizing some things. We're going to rotate secretaries so that again, phone calls can start getting to the building level. At this time, all messages have been coming through to Mr. Hiddle, Mr. Lyons or myself. And we, we've got questions coming in that really need to be coming from the building level in terms of answers such as how are we going to get students' possessions back to them? And, and you know, things about next year and what's going to happen this summer and so forth. So we'll get that information out. Teachers will start coming in the week of the 11th permitting that everything is still on track from the governor's plan. And they will start collecting and organizing how we're going to get all the students' possessions back to them since they left right before spring break. It was kind of a, of a jolted, unexpected moment. And some students left some things behind. And we were able to get some really important things that were necessary for students to have right away back to them. But there, there are some items left behind that we want to get out to students. And we'll work on that plan around the, the 11th of May. Let's see here, we are, are really going well with our Pickle High School construction project. You know, we were very gracious to have wonderful support from the community for the renewal of the PI money a couple of years ago. And we did phase one last summer, which was the 500 week we've talked many times about. We're now doing first floor and the commons area, the locker rooms, the front office. We're doing some work in the CPA and, and some of the classrooms that are in that area leading up to the entrance to the first floor academically. And it's, it's going to be a much more efficient building. We're bringing it into the next 40 years, I believe. The building we know is a very good structure. We just had to provide some important updates and give it a little bit of a, of a fine tuning, a lipstick, if you will, to, to make it look nicer and more current to Pickle collars and so on. So that work is going very well. We're right on schedule, actually a little bit ahead of time, hopefully. And we've got some extra time to get that done. So we, we had a meeting today. I thank Mr. Bostick for being there. And Jeremy's been leading that cause up very well. And that they could not be more happy with, with the work and the partnership that we have with them. And I think the, the community is going to be very pleased when they see that, that final product. Any questions about the PHS construction?
I would just give a big shout out to all of our custodians. We had them in this week and they worked their tails off. We, we literally moved the middle section of that high school out within a three-day time period. And you're talking about desks and chairs and all kinds of just tons of materials and all that stuff. And we've got them out in storage pods and just the amount of work they did. They did, they did a really great job while still following all the procedures and having your masks on and all that stuff. So it becomes a little bit hot and tedious at times, but they did a great job. And actually, Broomball was amazed at how much we got done in such a short period of time. So the sooner we can get stuff turned over to them, hopefully the sooner they can give it back to us so that when we get to go back to school, we're ready to roll.
Yep. Finally, just some, some fun things that have happened. Many people have seen the, the bus drivers came in and did a special message for our, our seniors. And this week we had staff members sign up to take signs out for the seniors. We're going to put up a great big banner on the Wirth fence so that everybody that drives by Wirth Stadium will see a great big congratulations to our seniors. And you know, this is different for them. We're trying to do everything we can to recognize them and then give them what, what we think should be a good celebration. So build as much as we can there. Mr. Messick, the principal of the high schools communicated how we're going to do some other things virtually, such as class night and the awards assemblies and the things that we normally do in, in person that we just can't right now. So trying to maintain those. And finally, next week is National Staff Appreciation Week. We celebrate that every year, the first week of May. It's going to be very different this year not to be able to go out personally and congratulate staff and just thank them for the wonderful things they do. The board always provides lunches for everybody to gather and just kind of be together and celebrate that. And it's a, it's a very different thing this year. And everybody's giving up a lot and they've adjusted. And we, we keep saying it's a new normal, but it doesn't feel normal. There's, there's still a lot of differences in terms of how we do things. But our staff, they're working around the clock. You know, we don't have that limited time now where, where it's from this time to this time because students are doing work according to how parents can support them at home. And their schedules have been adjusted and so on. So teachers are really doing things much throughout the day to, to help and support. And we just appreciate what everybody's doing. When we have a special project that comes up, when we ask for help or even volunteer time, people just start jumping right on. So we have a great staff. They care very much about the kids in this community. And I'm super proud. I want to go on record for everybody to know how proud I am of the staff. I think they work harder than anybody, you know. I say it all the time, I've been here 28 years. I've grown up in the community. I've seen this district at all angles. And I'm just really proud, proud of what we accomplished. So next week, it celebrates all staff. I include secretaries and bus drivers, teachers, everybody. And, and if anybody has an inkling out there, they want to send a card or a notion or anything like that. I, I saw today that somebody's organizing an idea to get a staff appreciation shirt to every staff member. So they're asking for people to donate to that cause and sponsor one T-shirt for a teacher. So just things like that are popping up and we really, really do appreciate that. And just want to recognize the staff. So that's the end of my updates. Does anybody have any questions for me about anything, what I've talked about or anything else?
No, I just, I want to, sorry Kelly.
You first.
I want to just kind of second or agree with you on that being the husband of a teacher and seeing what they're going through and having three kids in the system right now doing all the work. I've obviously had to change my work schedule where I'm home a lot during the week just to help. But it is, I mean, these teachers and I, not just my wife, but all the teachers are going above and beyond what's normally asked of them. And I feel like they are doing amazing work and, and they do need to be recognized.
I agree too. And I just wanted to say, I've seen some of the signs personally, and I think they're fantastic. And whoever orchestrated that, I think Chip, right?
Yep.
He needs to get a, a good high five because they're awesome. And I hope that the students are excited about them. I know it's hard for us to display anything that would be, you know, as good as what they would have gone through this last quarter. But I think those signs were awesome and what the bus drivers came up with, that was super awesome too. Those pictures were fantastic.
Yeah, and just a big note about the signs. We went to Awesome Pickle to see if they could help support some of that. And not only did they donate money to that, but Dan French said, I'll just pay the rest of it. So two great, great, you know, support systems right there for that. And I really appreciate that. And Mike Allery for coming and helping us with the buses and lifting his camera. And he took some great photos of when we lit up the stadium for the seniors. So a lot of people are just jumping in and, and helping out. I can't forget to give a special mention to our cooks, who, you know, when everybody else was trying to stay home and be safe, our cooks literally said, we're coming to feed the kids. I mean, they, they weren't going to let their kids fall behind. And now our bus drivers are even coming in and helping bag up food and distribute it. And what a, what a monumental task that is with the amount of food that they're giving in, in one day's time. It's huge. And it's amazing to watch them work and give up that, that time. And they just jump right in and do it. So I don't want to forget to mention them. Anything else?
Well, I think that kind of go along with that same thing. If people are really paying attention, they're seeing how, how this community's come together to support the schools, what the staff has done. It's just amazing when you look at even other communities, you know, in a lot of ways, we're, we're way ahead of what some other communities are doing. That, that just speaks volumes about Pickle. So I think everybody needs to be congratulated for the efforts they're putting in.
I've said it many times, and again, I've spent my whole life here. It's times like this that I think Pickle's at its best. I really, I see it over and over how Pickle just pulls together to, to support one another in, in times like this. So it's, that's what makes me proud to be a part of this community. You're right, Evie.
Dwayne, does that lunch feeding go up until the last week of school? And then Salvation Army does their summer feeding program after that? Or is that going to the summer at all?
We're looking at how to support that program right now. It's going to go up to the end of the year. But we're looking at, does Salvation Army have the capacity to continue? And if not, how can we continue to support that to make sure people still have what they need? So we're right in the middle of that planning still.
Okay.
To that extent, to that extent in the personnel agenda tonight, you will see that we are adding a site manager position for food service as well as summer food service workers. And we're opening up that summer food service workers to anyone in the district that needs a summer job that has time to commit to doing that work, that they can be part of that. Because our, our bus drivers who need work for the summer, those things. So this is going to allow them to be part of that as well. So in preparation for if we take on the summer feeding, we wanted to have that in place.
Okay, any other questions for me in general about anything at all?
One more question, just maybe on a different note. How have the teachers felt about being able to reach all of their students?
So it's varied through this whole process. You know, when it first started, everybody jumped in headfirst. And I think everybody was eager to figure things out and get it going. I think when the governor announced the second phase, people were like, okay, we can still do this. We did lose some students. You know, we do have a transient population and we lost track of some people that just kind of disappeared, so to speak. So we, we work really hard to do what we call wellness checks because we need to make sure students are okay too. So we worked with the police department to just stop by and say, we want to make sure everybody's okay. If, if we, we still don't get anything, we are obligated still to meet certain requirements for students to be able to be promoted or certainly to graduate and have a diploma. So if we have those kids that are at risk, rather than letting them fall through the cracks, we have contacted our truancy officer and asked her to make some contact to make sure we can get those kids back engaged into the program. So, and we're documenting that to make sure that we can, we can track students and, and are we making sure we're reaching out to everybody? So there's some ebbs and flows. And, and we've also had to remember things like, you know, 124 people don't have internet. They don't have access to it. And, and there are many more that have limited data or they might only have a phone to work from, or they have one computer to share with five kids, or they're sharing workspace with a parent. We've had families that have dealt with COVID and other illnesses and other deaths in the family and so on. So we've had to be very understanding and also kind of get to the root cause and not just make some assumptions that students are resisting. But what, what's happening and then how do we support that? You know, when, when the child's in school, we wrap around that kid. You know, we get the counselors involved and the principal and so many other people. So how do we do that now in a virtual setting? When you have to stay distant and do all those important things to meet the, the guidelines? A lot of things to consider. So we're just really trying to really find out what, what it is. So what we've done is if a teacher's struggling with that, they contact the administrator first. And they do that, that root cause level where they, they try to just find out what's happening. And, and can they bring the person back in to where they're doing? So overall, I, I think everybody's done the best they can. Our goal has been to sustain this. By the time the governor announced it the third time that we were closed for the rest of the year, we made some adjustments in the amount of work and the days we were assigning things. We made it very clear how we were going to grade things. We can't grade things the same way because again, in the classroom, a teacher can use proximity. They can use small group, large group. They can work with them at recess. They can do so many different things to meet a kid's needs that we can't do now. So we can't grade the same. So we made all that clear. We tried to help parents understand where we were going. And I think it was well received and it's going really well. And, and you know, parents have been very complimentary. They do call and ask great questions. They almost apologize sometimes for. Um that they do call and ask great questions. They almost apologize sometimes for like, you know, bothering us and they're not bothering us at all. Um we want them to call. Uh we've got a technology hotline that we want people to call and and get help from. In fact, I'll say that number is nine three seven nine one six three one five zero. If anybody has any questions about technology, they can call that and get support at any time. Um so we we want to, you know, have a strong position here and make sure we get everybody the help that they can. And um we'll start wrapping some things up here soon and give give maybe that last meeting some time to make sure all the work has been turned in so teachers have time to grade it and get everything into progress book and we can get those final report cards out to everybody.
How are they doing tracking attendance this uh through the virtual school?
So it's the same. It's based on work that's turned in. They're having webinars, Zoom meetings and Google Hangouts and stuff like that. Um they're they're trying to get kids to to check in on those and they vary them throughout the day so that they don't overlap with other areas. And and again, if they're not tuning in, that's when they contact the principal and say, hey, I haven't heard from Andy Height for a while. Can you check on him? And then we try to get that kid back engaged and back on track. It it'll be interesting to see how it happens. I I think the next challenge we'll be facing is parents are going to start going back to work as the economy opens up. So we might have some people going to work. Children are still home. How how is that going to work for families? We're going to have to be very understanding of that, supportive of that, and understand again that some parents will may not be able to help during the day, but when they get home in the evening after working and doing a full day, they're going to have to help. And it may be a delay and 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 so on. So um it it will be an adjustment that we'll make and we'll continue to support the best we can. Good questions. Um nothing else? All right. So I'll move on through the rest of mine. I would like to recommend the board approve the list of donations. Um we we were very sad to hear that longtime principal and Pickwa educator Glenn Honeycutt passed away um the last month. And and when that happened, we had um some people that had donated some money in his name to our sports program. So we are accepting those donations at this time. I'd like to recommend the board to approve the attached resolution authorizing membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2021 school year. We do that every year at this time. Um they give us all the guidance and the directions we need. They keep our program safe, especially through times like this COVID crisis right now. Everybody follows those guidelines and they're very informative in terms of how they provide the information um that we get. And then recommend the board um approve the attached list of students for issuance of a diploma for a Pickwa High School as the 2020 Pickwa High School graduate. We have almost every senior on here that has completed the requirements that they need. There are um a handful of students that aren't on this list because they have not done that yet. They're that close. And we are working very hard. You know, Mr. Height out at the high school, Mr. Messick and those counselors work diligently to try to get kids at this point um over the edge. We just had a handful of kids that we couldn't get on this list. We want to approve them in April, however, because everything that's changed, of course, when we get to that point and they're done voting, if a student wants us to mail their diploma, we're going to work on getting those out to them because they're needing those things to start work and and the military and so on. We didn't want to wait till the end of May and then also have a delay in how we were going to get diplomas out to kids. So we're going to approve everybody tonight that we can. The handful of kids that are still very, very close, we're going to get those in May and we'll help those kids make sure they get theirs too, but we just weren't ready to put every person on there. But for the most cause, you're going to see everybody on that list. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me?
So for the most part, the situation, this unique situation isn't impacting our graduation rate. It's gonna it's gonna be good.
Nope. We 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 still have some students that are behind that are that are credit deficient in terms of some choices they may have made. You know, they're freshmen, sophomore, junior year, and we do everything we can to get them caught up. Um again, Darryl Height leads that up at the high school and he and his team do an amazing job. Uh we were talking today about three graduates that um that that are that are close. They're not on the list tonight, but they're really close. And he said, man, they've really stepped up their game. They're they're running really fast to get to the finish line right now. And he said they're doing everything right. So um he's he's making sure we support them and 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 cheerlead them into the to the end line here, but um it 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 hasn't. No, we're we're still trying to get kids to to graduate just like we normally would. It's a little bit different different format.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other questions, um you can do a roll call um to to approve um agenda.
Yeah, we need a motion, correct?
Yes.
Need a motion in a second, please.
So move.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Hiddle?
This is McMackin.
Hi.
Mr. Height.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Uh.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Hey, Mr. Mr. Lyons, you have been patiently waiting for the uh personnel agenda.
I have, and I'm not going to take a lot of time. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me because I've had some lagging issues here. Does everybody hear me? Just shake your heads, Cam?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Um I do want to recognize a couple people. You have uh Pam Broering and um also Beth Fair on here, who will be leaving us. Uh lots of years committed to the district. Um uh Beth Fair uh has has obviously had her share of things that have been challenges this year uh with the loss of her husband. So our hearts go out to her. Um she came back and was ready to finish strong and I'm sure not the way she wanted to to wrap up her career uh this year, finishing up because I know she loves those kids. So uh for sure, want to thank them for for their time and service to our students. Um also, we have a couple of new positions that as Dwayne mentioned, I think, um in an update. We've been doing a lot of interviews uh virtually over the last few weeks and and that's been challenging, but we're learning a lot. So um McKenna Geissi will be uh the math teacher at PJHS. Abby Jacobs will be a Spanish teacher at PHS. And then Rachel Bisset, who was in um Air Force Specialist at Spring Creek, uh requested a transfer and we interviewed her and uh it's a great fit for her and for PCIS uh in that new position. So um with that, I Dwayne mentioned the food service people helping out and and the bus drivers coming in to help pack pack those lunches, but Sean's helped organize a lot of those volunteers um reaching. And we've had some amazing support with people coming out to help get those lunches to the cars. And and it really, you know, it's like everything else you do with this kind of situation. It evolves so much. You know, we started out doing it every day. Then we did five days and we had all these meals and we're kind of scrambling. And and now it's just working out really smoothly and and we're figuring out ways to get meals in kids' hands that we weren't able to originally. So um thank you to all those volunteers that have uh continued to come out and support us in that way. Um the only thing other thing um I want to mention is the supplemental nonrenewals. We do that every year for our supplemental contracts and uh that's on there too. Um and I think that's it for me for the personnel agenda. Any questions for that?
I will just add that um Melinda has finished her treasurer's license and in preparation for Karen's retirement, we are moving her to the um assistant treasurer role um that Sarah used to fill back a couple of years ago. So Linda's gotten all of her stuff done and ready to take that over. So.
And then that's reflected in in number ten there. We documented that on number ten along with our teaching and administrative contracts that you're going to uh vote on tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if we can entertain a motion in a second, please, for the personnel agenda vote. May we have a motion? Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hiddle?
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Hi.
Mr. Height.
Hi.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, now to L. Hearing of the public non-agenda items and in the waiting room. Okay. All right. Well, the next board meeting will be May 28th at 6:00 PM and we will get outward as it gets closer to time and see where we're at in this whole process. In closing, I, as the other board members have already done, would just like to thank everybody. Everybody that works with our district, uh staff, volunteers, partners, the community of Pickwa. You're absolutely awesome. It is amazing what has been done and how everybody is getting through this and and uh you know, it's like on the on the verge of a wave. We don't know where it's headed, but we're on it. And we're just, we're doing it as it goes. And so far, we've been very fortunate because we've got such wonderful people. And thank all of you. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Board members?